So Linda, it is 4:02 and I'll call this meeting to order. Item one is Pledge of Allegiance. Let's stand and do the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Item 1.2, the agenda. Adopt the agenda. Are there any corrections to the agenda as posted?
I have none.
All right, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as posted.
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Bianca?
Aye.
Rosemary?
She's frozen, it appears.
Yeah, she's been frozen for a little while.
Jeff?
Sure, yes, aye.
And I also approve. The motion carries. We'll just have to move on until she unfreezes. Moving on to
I'm gonna try.
Item two, public comments on items not on the agenda. Under this item, the public is invited to address the board regarding issues that are not on today's agenda. Please keep your comments concise, brief, and limited to three minutes. The board is not allowed, under the law, to take action on matters that are not on the agenda. Should comments from the public pertain to a charge or complaint against an employee of Northern United Humboldt Charter School or Northern United Siskiyou Charter School, the board encourages the speaker to utilize the school's written complaint procedures to pursue the matter. The public will have an opportunity to comment on all agenda items as those are heard. Are there any comments? No, all right. Moving on to action items to be considered. So the item before us today is interview and consideration of a potential new board member. All right.
And Rosemary, I just wanted to let you know that, yes, you're back. We see you. Might be frozen still.
No, I could.
She's stopping her video.
Yeah.
What's that?
Can you hear us? I stopped your video and you seem to be coming through now.
Yeah, I would keep your video off, Rosemary.
Okay.
All right. So I'm just, I'll write in. Melissa, welcome and thank you for your interest in serving on the Northern United Charter School Board of Directors. We are in our third year as a newly constituted, reorganized charter school that emerged from the previous Matoll Valley Charter School. We are seeking a candidate to fill the remainder of a three-year term, which expires on December 10th, 2021. The NUCS Board of Directors is a hybrid of a traditional school board and a nonprofit Board of Directors. We serve both Siskiyou County and Humboldt County. Two directors come from Siskiyou and three come from Humboldt. We normally teleconference our meetings, but now are Zooming our meetings due to the coronavirus pandemic. Our board consists of three. Our board consists of three-year terms. Everybody serves a three-year term. We typically meet the second Thursday of each month, except for July, when we have no meeting. Adjustments are made to that schedule on an as-needed basis. There may be special board meetings as the need arises. Prior to the pandemic, we used to meet together twice a year here in Cutton or in Cutton, because I'm not in Cutton, and in Mount Shasta. So the coronavirus pandemic has changed this. We are governed by Articles of Incorporation bylaws, the Brown Act, California Education Code, and California Government Code. Our officers are Chairperson, President, Vice Chairperson, Vice President, Director, Secretary, and Treasurer. I would like now to introduce the directors and officers. Bianca Garza is the Board Vice Chair, Vice President. Rosemary Kunkler is a board member. Sherry Lovett is our Director. Linda Speck is our Recording Secretary. Tammy Piccone is our Treasurer. And I am Jerry Cox, Board Chairman, President. So we have some questions.
Jeff is a board member as well.
Oh, I'm sorry. And Jeff, I apologize. Apparently, I am reading from my un-revised copy. So thank you, Sherry, for that. So we have some questions for you to answer, after which we will deliberate and make our decision. Listen carefully. If you do not understand the question, please ask us to repeat it or for clarification. Some questions have multiple parts. Board members will rotate asking the questions and we'll start with Rosemary. Or, excuse me, we'll start with Bianca and then Rosemary, then Jeff, and then me. So is that clear? Okay. There may be a delay in hearing a person due to the nature of the Zoom meeting. So just be patient. As you can see, technical issues are not uncommon. Let me start with this question. When you're part of a board, the school, staff, students, and your fellow board members are relying on you. If you're unable to attend a board meeting, you would be expected to contact the Board President or the school director in advance. Also, if you're unable to regularly attend meetings, you may be voted off the board. Are these conditions you can abide by?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I'll let Bianca start with the questions.
Thanks, Sherry. Hey, Melissa, it's good to see you. So please tell us a little bit more about yourself. We have your, the packet that you turned in, the questionnaires, but if you could tell us more about yourself and what makes you a great candidate to serve on the Board of Directors and then follow up with why is that we should select you to serve.
Hi, my name's Melissa Johnson and I'm 31 years old. I have two children, an older girl and a younger boy, both of which go to Matoll, I mean, Northern United. And I myself graduated high school from when it was Matoll. And I have a small business, body care, and my husband's a firefighter. I live in Etna, California, and I've kind of traveled the county, little lived all around. Yeah, some of the reasons that I would be a good board member would be that I'm able to think critically and problem solve. I like to work with others and I think I do pretty well at it. I care a lot about our community and and the children, because I know they're the future. I want to see the school succeed so that the children of our community can succeed, as it's helped my family a lot. There's some parts of that question that I'm missing. Bianca?
You know, you did well in telling us about yourself and your family and why it is, partially why it is that we should select you to serve the board in terms of your care and understanding that children are our future. So if you desire to expand upon why it is that we should select you to fill the vacancy, you know, that's up to you, but I got the ethos of what it is that you're trying to say myself.
If there was anything that I would add, it would be that I think that I could pick up on what is needed in the board, what's missing, maybe what I can represent, how I can represent our community more on the board and more kind of maybe be a missing link. So I think I could fill whatever space is needed, whether that be to learn more about certain skills and bring them to the board. That would be something I'd be willing to do.
Thank you.
Melissa, I'm Rosemary and I'm going to ask you the next question. Our bylaws reference when filling a vacancy, we are to look for candidates who have experience in one or more of the following areas: education, government, law, business, finance, accounting, fundraising, facilities, or public relations. I know that's a really long list. What experience do you have in any one of these areas?
Well, I am currently, I'm the homeschool educator for my children, so I'm kind of learning how to do that. When it comes to fundraising, I helped some of the fundraising in the South County part of our Siskiyou unit, so I have a little bit of experience there, not much, but I kind of, I think that I could do well in that area, learn more and gain skills for that. I'm currently building a small business of my own, so I'm constantly trying to learn more about how to run a business successfully and as well as how to manage finances and all of that. So I think those three areas would be ones that I either have a little bit of experience in or am seeking to gain more in.
Right. Thank you.
Hello, Melissa. My name's Jeff. Welcome. Thank you for stepping up and wanting to participate in our charter school at a higher level. I think it's just, you know, it's a lot of commitment, a lot of, it's just, it's a good experience, I think. I was where you are a year ago. So I kind of am familiar with, you know, kind of the process and what's going on, and it's been a good year. It'll get a little technical, but I want to ask you, are you familiar with parliamentary procedures such as Robert Rules of Order?
No.
Okay. A follow-up question would be, what is your familiarity with the Brown Act? Have you heard of that before?
No.
Okay, so you and I have something in common, because last year I didn't know that either. So, yeah, don't let that overwhelm you. But those two things come into play and the structure of our of our board and the way we kind of proceed with things. And so, yeah, you'll get familiar, if you get on, those things will, you know, you'll want to learn a little bit about both of them. So, thank you.
Hello again, Melissa. What do you see as the basic purpose of a public charter school? I mean, this is a two-part question. So, part one, what do you see as the basic purpose of a public charter school? And what do you see as the role of the Board of Directors in fulfilling that purpose?
For the first part about the purpose of a charter school, my perspective is that it fulfills a need for students who don't fit into the traditional public school system. Maybe their families have different schedules, various reasons, a lot of, a lot of things I could think of. And just to kind of make that available, an alternative to the traditional eight to three, and I think that the board can help that happen by finding out what it is that the community needs and making sure that the school is able to fulfill that as well as the checks and balances and decision-making to make sure that it can function and continue to function for a long time.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Scenario type question. You're at the store and a parent approaches you about an issue involving the parent, student, and/or the school. How would you respond to that?
I would hear them out and maybe take note of it if I could and let them know that I would maybe discuss it, bring it up to the board, or I would, I would, I think that what I would probably do is invite them to come to a board meeting and bring their topic up with all of us so that we could all be aware of it, to write a letter, maybe.
Thank you.
All right, we're back to me, Melissa. This question, this next question is also another two-part question. As a director, what do you see as your primary purpose or role? And then, how would you fulfill that role, both as an individual and a member of the governing board?
My question would be, you said as a director, would that mean me personally as my place on the board?
As a board member.
Okay.
I know that the word director is kind of confusing, but it's the member, as a member.
Okay. Do you think you could repeat it one more time for me?
Absolutely. As a director or member, what do you see as your primary purpose or role? And then, how would you fulfill that role, both as an individual and a member of the governing board?
I think that I would see my role as a representative of the community that the school supports. And I think that it would be my duty to represent the diverse population as best as I could. And the way that I would fulfill that role would be through listening and meeting as many families as I could, trying to connect to what the need was and and then I would, my motions and votes are, I don't really know how much about it. My perspective and input would do the best I could to reflect that through research and communication with others.
There you go. Thank you.
Hey, Melissa, it's Jeff again. So my question is, what do you appreciate most about the Northern United Charter Schools?
I appreciate the personal, individual support of the students that they maybe could be missing in their home life or in traditional school systems. I think that the school meets the students where they are, no matter who they are or what socioeconomic status they are, and helps them succeed and make their life better. So that's my
Good. Thank you.
Melissa, what would you like to accomplish as a board member? And secondly, what is your highest priority as a board member? And why?
I would like to accomplish a good representative of just the common family that that the school supports, just kind of reflect what the needs of the families and students might be, and maybe they're what they would want when, you know, when issues come up and could you repeat the second part of the question, please?
Certainly. What is your, what would be your highest priority? And why?
To help the school to continue to function for, in the long run, so that it can continue to support the students.
Excellent. Thank you.
My turn again. If selected, what will you do to become an effective board member?
I would, I would just ask that for guidance and I would do my best to gain knowledge on subjects that I have none in and research and ask questions.
All right. Now, my next question, describe how an effective school board or Board of Directors ensures that there are opportunities for parents and community members to express their views on any given issue that the board is considering.
Well, I know that the agenda is posted on the website, I guess, just get the word out to students and people of the school, try and keep them informed about what the board's talking about and motioning on and everything. Just keep them informed in whatever way, if that be by emails or personal contact, I'm not sure what my place, you know, what I would be allowed or not allowed to do, but just try to keep everybody informed that they're allowed to come and listen in and check out what's going on.
Thank you.
All right, Melissa, it's Jeff again. My question is, while we're, when we deal with things on the board, we're dealing with things, we're trying to balance community concerns with student needs, with parent needs, staff needs. And then there's a mix of state and local government that comes into play with the things that we do. So my question is going to be, considering all that, what's the one core value that you have, you think that would help you, to help kind of guide you through the things I just mentioned?
Always be open and look for, look for solutions. I think that's really it.
Okay, nice. Thank you.
Well, Melissa, we've come to the last question. Do you, Melissa, have any questions for us?
Oh, yeah. What, what would be a good thing that you guys would like to gain through my presence on the board?
Well, let's, let's just go around. Bianca? What, what say you?
Thanks, Sherry. It's a great question. What would we like to gain from your presence on the board? You know, I guess what first comes to my mind is the fact that you live in a totally different part of the county than where I live. So being able to represent the needs of the families who also live in more rural areas and, you know, being able to communicate that back to us and during the meetings, to be able to better represent and say, you know, whether it's an internet issue or, you know, resources, whatever the case may be, but I think that would be that type of representation, which I do believe you were alluding to in one of your answers earlier. I think that that would be something that I would want to gain.
Rosemary?
You know, piggybacking on what Bianca was saying there, your own words were to spread the word. Talk to the families out there, bring back to the meetings their thoughts, issues, things like that. And Bianca said it very, very eloquently.
Okay, Jeffrey?
Yeah, I'm kind of in the same vein as the other board members in the sense that it's interesting to me that I think you would come from a different perspective, not just geographically, which will help, I think, a great deal. But you have a little different age difference than some of us. And I think that will come into play. I think the fact that, you know, that you're educating your kids at home plays into that. I mean, there's, there's a strong drive there. And so, yeah, and I, you know, as I listen to you, I just love the fact that every time you didn't quite know how to answer something or weren't sure. know how to answer some or weren't sure, you always ask for clarification. That's a great skill. I mean, you know, it's probably one of the best ones. I think you could have, you know, being on a board or, you know, serving in the public interest. So, yeah, thank you. Just for stepping up to the plate.
Thank you.
So Melissa, I, I believe it'll be your authenticity and sincerity because you're bringing a different perspective and frame of reference to the board. It's it's not less than, it's different than, and it's actually complimentary to what we all bring to the table. You know, it's, it's your uniqueness would be, you know, your newness and freshness to serving on a board just by nature. Questioning different things that come up. And believe me, there'll be a lot of new, new things that you'll, you would be trying to come to terms with. So that's what I would say. Do you have any other questions for us?
No, I think that I think that was good. Thank you.
Okay. All right, well, that concludes our questioning. So at this point, let me open it up for discussion. And by discussion, you know, I'm calling on my fellow board members to say what's on their minds.
Melissa, I just have one more question. On a, on a scale from one to 10, where would you say your sense of humor lies? 10 being the most.
Seven.
Thank you.
So does anybody have any thoughts that they're willing to share?
I, I have a thought and question. I'm going to go first with my thought. I, I want to commend you on appearing to be relaxed. Now, I don't know, getting back to Jeff's question, I don't know, maybe you're standing in a puddle of pitbull. We don't know that because we can't see it, but you, you answered the questions. You seem very composed. But my one question that I do have in your, on your application, you talked about some issues in making the meetings. Can, can you elaborate just a little bit, even though you did give plan and a backup plan, how often do you see that happening?
I just don't have a lot of what do you call them, things that I have to do like this. So I don't have a lot of experience. Like every Thursday I have this meeting, so you have to be there for me, kind of thing for, I haven't asked a lot of my family or my team up until now. I, I pretty much take care of the children as needed all the time. They're just with me all the time. So I just want to make that, make everybody aware of that, just because as you could probably tell by like my work history and all of that, they've been my primary concern is the family. It's come number one. And, but this is an important obligation, which I appreciate the opportunity to be a part of. So I wouldn't want that to get in the way and I don't see it getting in the way. I just wanted to make everyone aware of that. So I really don't think once a month will be a problem. Just.
Perfect. Thank you.
Can I ask one more question? I'm curious kind of what brought you to this time and period of, of applying for a board to be on the board? What was kind of the journey for you, either, you know, socially, mentally, you know, I mean, kind of, kind of how, how did you kind of get guided to this, to this spot today?
Well, Kirk definitely helped. And I actually appreciate, want to say thank you Kirk for your persistence to keep.
Begged actually. No, I didn't, I didn't beg. I kept up.
Yeah, that I needed that. I kind of didn't feel that, I haven't had a lot of interviews in my life. So I kind of thought, well, am I really suited for this? I don't have a lot of experience. I don't really know anything about that, but I've, I actually have over the last year or so been thinking like, how can I support the school more? How can I support the community more? A friend and, and I have been kind of talking about ways that we can support community education where there's gaps. You know, in traditional education. And, and then Kirk kind of brought this up, so I just thought about it a lot and gave it plenty of time. And then I realized like, yes, this is, this is been presented to me for a reason and I would really like plus the experience would be great. So.
I, I, you know, I'll just share this with you. I think that you have a lot of great qualities that maybe you're underselling a little bit. I know some of that's nervousness. But, you know, you, you have the most important qualities. I mean, you have young children, you're vested in education. And, you know, I mean, that's a great baseline to start from. The rest is, you know, is just stuff that you'll learn and, and, you know, come across, but, you know, I, I appreciate your openness, your honesty. And, you know, you'll probably sleep well tonight. Get into this. You know, you'll use up all that adrenaline and you're going to be good, but, but I, but I think you have some great qualities. I took a lot of notes as you were talking. Things that, you know, if I was going to hire you, the pluses, you know, are just, they're piling up. So, you know, congratulations on that.
Thank you.
You know, Melissa. Yeah, yeah. Kudos Kirk. You know, Melissa, with the make, the current makeup of the board, only one individual had previous school board experience. Now, our our school director has that experience. Our recording secretary has that experience. But you know, the point is, everybody, and I alluded to this earlier, everybody brings something unique to the table and that's kind of the wow factor or the it factor. The, the fact that you had commented that you, you feel like when you're asked what you hope to accomplish as a board member, that you, you hope to represent the common family. And that's wonderful. You know, because you're you're involved, you, you see things, experience things that I don't. That I can't just automatically do, whereas you can. Bianca can. Rosemary makes it a point because of her grandchildren. You know, so it's all really good. You've, you've, from some of your answers, you appear to take an open-minded approach, looking for solutions. It's kind of like, okay, we have this issue, we have this problem. You know, instead of being Debbie Downer about it, well, how can we, how can we solve this and move forward? I think that's a great quality and, you know, and it's just sort of the, the wide-eyed newness. That's a good thing. So, and, and believe me, there's, there would be a tremendous amount of support. Because we are a relatively new entity. Are certainly both Rosemary and Bianca can attest to the fact that we worked very hard to put a lot of processes and procedures in place for new board members. In fact, there is such a thing as a, a board member handbook that covers lots of different things. So it's not like going into it and feeling overwhelmed. You still might feel overwhelmed at times, but we're all pretty open. Easy to get along with kind of individuals. Unfortunately, it may take more than a year's time to have an interaction by all of us in one place, one setting, due to the pandemic and all the restrictions and so on and so forth, but we're all hopeful that one day we'll be able to return to some sense of normalcy. Do any of my other board members have anything to say?
I just, just that I would encourage Melissa, you know, and Jerry kind of hit on that, there is kind of a steep learning curve, it was for me. You know, there's a lot of things, I have a lot of life experience, but there's a lot of things about the board that I didn't know and, and some of the governmental things and but, you know, in saying that, you know, I could tell you that the other board members, Rosemary and Bianca and Jerry and especially Sherry, I mean, would always kind of be aware that I was the new person. Take the time to explain it, even though they've heard it more than once. And, you know, making sure those little building blocks are in place. You know, it was a comfortable feeling knowing that, you know, I'm in a nest, but I got, you know, a big mother bird, Sherry, kind of watching over me and, and taking care of that stuff. So, you know, hopefully going forward, you know, if we, you know, put you on the board, that you just relax with that. And, you know, you'll learn as you go. And Jerry's right, it, it takes some time. I'm, you know, been here a little over a year and I'm, I'm still learning. So that's a good thing.
Thank you.
So any other comments? If not, is is it time to close discussion and does somebody have a motion?
I've moved that we close discussion and go into, I guess, closed meeting? Is that right?
No.
No?
No.
This is an action item to vote her in, to appoint her as a board member as an action item. So we would be looking toward a motion like that.
So Jeff made a motion to close discussion. Is there a second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded to close discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Bianca?
Aye.
Rosemary?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And I also approve. Discussion is closed, so I'll entertain a motion. Can be any, you know, some of you know the, the various options. All of you know the various options. But we should make a motion. I can't.
I'll make a motion to approve Melissa Johnson as our new board member.
From Siskiyou?
From Siskiyou, representing Siskiyou.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Bianca?
Aye.
Rosemary?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And I also approve. Welcome to the board, Melissa.
Yeah.
Congratulations, Melissa. Now that that's happened, I, I feel like I, I want to say, Melissa, you have made me so proud. I mean, the fact that you were a graduate from our school really means a lot to me and I'm super excited to be able to work with you and I just appreciated your answers and your like forthcoming nature and it's just going to be great, but I just, I was sitting here bursting with pride as you were, as you were speaking. You should be the poster child for our school. And, and Jerry, I was just thinking that we would just swear her in at the beginning of the next meeting.
Yes. Yes, procedurally. That's what we'll do. In the meantime, Melissa, Sherry will be in contact with you. There's there's some things that you'll, that she'll cover that you'll be in need of. You'll have your own special in UCS email currently. And we all, it's, it's a little reminder to the rest of you, Form 700 that you need to fill out and get to Sherry. And it's, it's a standard form as a an official that we have to fill out and turn in. You heard me mention the handbook. There's also a, a copy of Robert's Rules of Order. Kind of little guide for, for that. You know, and so on. And so you'll be get soon getting the March meetings board agenda and board packet. And of course you have a close resource, as I understand it, and Bianca, but you know, I'd encourage you to, you know, reach out to Sherry. I'm always available to answer questions. I, I get emails and phone calls and text messages. Just part of the, the role in the process. So I will say, you know, and dovetailing on what Sherry said, Sherry and I had conversation. I can't remember if it was earlier in the week or last week and I can't remember if it was earlier in the week or last week and you know, we talked about, I guess, in a sense, how excited we were at the at the prospect of you joining us on the board for all the reasons that have been since stated. So we're finally, you know, and, you know, from from my perspective, we've been without a full complement in the original configuration as formed, two from Siskiyou, three from Humboldt, for a very, very long time. And so you have fulfilled you know, a longstanding desire because of the vacancy. So speaking on behalf of of everybody, we're really excited to bring you on board.
Thank you.
And through a strange set of circumstances, I was a surrogate Siskiyou board member for a while. So and you'll you'll probably learn that in another other meeting, another time, but yeah.
Thank you, guys. Talk to and I appreciate it.
And Melissa, I just want to do a really quick introduction of the some of the other people that are on here. So you know Kirk Miller and he's the regional director on in Siskiyou. Well, in Humboldt, we have two regional directors and one is Julie Smith and one is Rebecca Davis. So those are the other faces you're seeing there that haven't spoken.
Hi, guys. Hi, Melissa. I didn't want you to think that we were just peeping toms just looking in on on your interview. What I wanted to say to you is you did a great job. I love your genuineness. I love your heart, your openness. I love that you mentioned the kids so many times. That was really special and congratulations and welcome. Yes, welcome. I'm Julie. I'm talking now. No, I know, I didn't say my name. Go ahead. I just want to say welcome and I look forward to getting to know you better.
Thank you, you too.
Can I say? I wanted to commend you and the rest of the people that are in this meeting because prior to me going blank up here, I was laughing at Julie who kept doing something and she had a pirate's hat on and she had a crown going and nobody break just broke a smile at all.
It was not.
Yeah, look at you. You were doing something. You had a neck.
I would expect nobody but you to notice, is all I would say. It was accidental. I was trying to get off of the filters, but it was having a lot of fun doing it.
Everybody saw it, not just me.
I saw it.
Jeff said, yes.
The flower in her hair, the pirate hat, the whole deal.
Whatever, you guys. My gosh.
That's the sense of humor we're talking about or Jeff was talking about, Melissa.
I was kind of waiting for Jeff to ask me if I believed Bigfoot was real, so.
Okay, now that now that you're in. So where do you stand on that?
Yeah.
But that's good. You're open, right? Thank you.
All right, so it is 4:57. And I'll adjourn this meeting.